Hello. Hi, Kim. We're ready whenever you all are.
I think we're ready. Anybody have any objections? Just let me know when when we're streaming.
We are live.
All right, well, it's 7:01. I will call the March 15, 2021 meeting of the Library Trustees to order. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
By Kim and a second.
A second.
By Chris. All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah.
Aye.
Yes.
Okay, it's unanimous. And our reports, Treasurers' report, I'll turn it over to Catherine.
Thank you. Okay, so to start off, I'll be, I'll go with income and expense reports. So typical expenses for the month of February included payroll, health insurance, our usual maintenance contracts, and also utilities. And atypical expense, something that we don't usually expend on was a legal bill related to the CATS we took in the Library Board case. Our electricity usage, in good news, was at a normal level in February. I cannot explain it. It is really strange how this has played out. So I did still continue with GM and got a quote for the new control system. So essentially like a computer system that monitors the HVAC system. And that's something that will need to be replaced every couple of years. So at this point, that the building is six years old now. We're at that point. So that quote came in at 8,995. So I'm going to recommend that we wait to vote on that item until, I would say, the April or May meeting. And that way, we can better predict how the fiscal year 2021 budget will close. And also, it could be something that we might want to use fiscal year 22 capital funds on for that project. So we're in a good building spot with building maintenance right now. No sort of out of ordinary major repairs, since the toilets have been taken care of. The front doors were also taken care of. Just smaller things. There was one smaller sensor that came up on our HVAC quarterly maintenance that was just done last week. So that, I think, amounted to around $50. And will appear on our March reconciliations next month. And then, we also had materials purchasing, which is a pretty typical expense. Each year, we spend about $2,000 on our E-zone for Ocean State Libraries. So we submit funds to Ocean State Libraries. They purchase items that are in high demand by our Tiverton patrons. This year, a donor made a donation to the foundation of $500 for E-zone items specifically. So we were actually able to submit an E-zone order for just over 2,500 this year. I'll actually go into detail about that more during New Business, since that was a question that had come up. Any questions about income and expense reports? Okay. I will move on to Bank Newport, if that's all right. Okay, so during their regular February meeting, the Friends of the Library very graciously voted to approve my request of $5,490 for our 2021 programs here at the library. That is about half of what I typically request. We had some rollover from 2020. And due to some of the programs being virtual, they are a little less expensive than typical in-person programs. There are also several programs that we haven't really been able to run that we normally have. So therefore, that was an adjusted amount for this year. And we did, I did leave it with the Friends that they are more than happy to have us approach them with a request for additional funds for any sort of special project or specific program, which is so helpful and so wonderful of them. This is actually how our Beach Book Cart was funded two years ago. So that will, so that's a possibility for 2021 if we find that we have a really special project we would like them to take a look at. You will also see some expenses on the Bank Newport reconciliation related to programming for February. We're typically buying craft supplies right now. If we have a virtual seminar or a lecture, it will be a payment to the entertainer or the lecturer. And then, I did extend our subscription for our second Zoom account for March. I have been interviewing a new librarian candidates for the open position that we have. And the interview times conflicted with some library program times. So we're only allowed to run one Zoom meeting at a time per account. So this will be a $14.99 charge until we decide to cancel our original Zoom account. We billed for just on a yearly basis, which is a little bit cheaper. But because we're only going to need the second account for a few months, we are doing the billing on a monthly basis. And that's what I have for Bank Newport. Any questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
Last month, when I was in, I signed a check for $500 out of that fund because the Library Foundation is going to be reimbursing the library for part of the OLSB. How does that happen?
So I think that was for the OSL E-zone purchase, if I'm not mistaken.
No, I understand that. I'm saying, how does that happen? How do they initiate that?
Oh, so the foundation can actually make an online transfer to our Bank Newport account?
No, no, I'm maybe I'm asking, who approves that?
Oh. I don't think anybody has to, since it's a donation.
Well, the Library Foundation is a 501(c)(3). So they're not subject to like open meeting laws or anything like that from the state, correct?
Right, right.
Okay, so someone had to initiate that payment, or it hasn't been paid yet. So who authorizes that? Because of the meeting minutes, it's not in there.
Yes, so that is going to be the treasurer of the foundation. And some background on that. We actually hadn't had the invoice. We were on the lookout for it, but OSL had never sent it to us. So I had asked them and said, can you please make sure you get this to us? So that invoice was delayed, so that should be happening during their next meeting. And typically, they don't require a vote for it. It's just that the charger takes care of sending the donation where it needs to go.
Do they, that's a related question. I know Kim is the liaison to the foundation. Does the foundation have a liaison to the Board of Trustees?
Uh, that I don't know. I don't know if there has ever been that.
I'm just asking because, again, the reason I bring this up, I know the foundation, their, their focus is raising funds for capital or operating funds. And I'm wondering how that relates to the trustees. In other words, it's like, it's like, like there were two silos. There's the foundation, which should be independent, and there's the Board of Trustees. And I was a little surprised when I saw the $500. I was, I was wondering how that happened. But, I mean, how does that get coordinated?
Um, so they have their monthly meetings. And then, I know in the past, whenever there has been, like Stu Gilfillan had come to talk to us about a fundraising campaign that they were doing. So I would say the liaison, the unofficial liaison would be the chair to you all. But since the donor had made the donation to the foundation, it was just that they needed to initiate that and have that sent over.
All right, I think that helps me out. Thank you.
Sure thing.
I, I have a question about that, but should I hold it to the new business item?
Uh, yeah, absolutely. Either, either way is okay. Okay. All right, so if that's it on Bank Newport, then that will conclude the Treasurers' reports.
And that brings us to FY22 budget update.
Yes, so, so far, sort of an uneventful update here. Just so everybody knows, I believe I emailed you all, but just to repeat, after our presentation to the Tiverton Budget Committee on February 25, the committee had actually suspended their meetings pending further information on revenue coming into the town and also the audit. I know that they did have a site visit, I think, this past weekend, but they haven't resumed their regular Thursday night meetings. I do know, according to the last town council meeting, the town council has scheduled a special meeting on Saturday, April 10, to discuss their fiscal year 22 budget. I haven't received any word that a library representative should be there, but I will definitely keep everybody updated on that. And that's all I have for the fiscal year 22 update.
Which brings us to Director's Report.
Me again. Okay, so as far as monthly statistics go, in February, it was another fantastic month for digital library circulation. That's the Ocean State Libraries' E-zone. So visits, physical item circulation, and program attendance are all sort of at the same level that they have been for the past months, which is very good. We're so happy that our patrons are interested in checking out items here at the library, coming through our doors, and also attending both virtual and take, a lot of take-home programs have been sort of the way that we've been doing things, instead of having everyone stay and meet in the library. AARP began their annual tax prep service program back in February as well, and they will be here until April 15. I worked very, they're a fantastic group to work with. I can't say enough great things about them. And between them and myself, we worked a couple hours on making sure it was going to be a COVID-safe environment for both them, because they are here a certain number hours a week, and then also folks coming in to drop off their orders, drop off their papers to be prepared. So that has been going very, very well. And that leads me into our COVID operations update. No changes to services at this time. We were really hoping that librarians and library workers were going to be included in the governor's vaccination plan, but we are not in any category, so we're just waiting to be called by age group. Some of our staff members have been vaccinated, which is great news. And so we're, we're getting there. We have about two-thirds of our staff left to get vaccinated. So all mask distancing and occupancy requirements are still in place. And I do believe there's going to be an update on occupancy on March 19, according to the governor's most recent press conference. So I believe we'll be at 50 square feet per person, five zero. Currently, we're at 100 square feet per person, and that hasn't been a problem in our building. And I don't think 50 square feet will be either. So we're ready. We're excited. Any questions about my Director's Report? Okay.
That brings us to New Business. So number one under New Business is Long Range Plan Update, which is our director.
Fantastic. So we are back on our regular schedule for our Long Range Plan Update. There were a few closer months last year that I gave you updates. So December was our last one, and we are now here in March. So this is a quarterly report that I give you all. As far as the plan itself, I provided the link in my Director's Summary. So if you'd like to take a look at it, it is on our library website. So at one point, I was sort of like crossing items off and giving updates on those. But I think a little bit more of an organic way to give you an update is by categorizing everything based on the goals. So the first goal has to do with library access and services. I will say, nothing much has changed since December, just with the state of how things are. The majority of our services are guided by what we can and cannot do right now. And I'm really hoping that once we get into June and July, our meeting room use will be back open. But it really is dependent on those guidelines and also our staff getting vaccinated. So we were able to expand our homebound, homebound book delivery program, and that has been really great. We have a couple individuals who receive book deliveries at home, and those are dropped off by a volunteer. And we're very grateful for that. So we're going to keep going with porch pickup services, because we do have folks who do not wish to come into the library. We do have our drive-through open, which has been great. But some folks really just prefer porch pickup, and that's okay with us. It's pretty catchy, if I do say so myself. So that has been a fantastic service for us. Our patrons are so happy that we're open our full hours, and I don't see that changing anytime soon. We're here for our full hours, and I intend to have us all here for those hours. And I did mention, I believe I mentioned this back in December, one of the major requests from our mid-year plan survey back in the beginning of 2020 was for hours on Sunday here at the library. So I think that might be a good goal for fiscal year '23. But I think for fiscal year '22, it's going to be us sort of returning to pre-pandemic status. And then, we'll have some room to grow with fiscal year '23. Okay, I'll move on to Communications. So that's around the second goal in our Long Range Plan. I think marketing is going well through our pretty typical channels. Our patrons are so used to those channels that I think that it's really the best way to go. And that consists of paper flyers and brochures here in the library, social media, our website, and of course, press releases. I think it's really, really helpful for us to have those press releases going to the papers to advertise. That's actually one of the main ways that folks hear about our programs and our services. I know I had mentioned previously about creating a new library website within the next two years or so. This is sort of one of those bigger projects that I think would really, really help us with promotion and making sure that our library website is accessible and fresh and new. One of the things that I've been thinking of is that when we do go ahead with a new library website to work with a branding consultant, so that they can utilize our logo and really help us with sort of uniform and cohesive templates for documents or social media and other front-facing or patron-facing materials, I think this could really sort of up our publicity, take it up a notch, and give us those great tools and graphics that we can keep using over and over again. At that point, we may be ready for a new logo. I really like our logo, but you know, that's always something that's up for discussion. So that was just something I was thinking about and to have on everybody's mind as far as communications goes. Any questions so far? Okay, I'll move into Programs. So as I mentioned, we welcomed AARP back in February, and this is a really big draw for a lot of our patrons and a lot of new faces coming to the library. So that has been wonderful. And, you know, they browse our resources, ask about our services, and also are able to see some of the programs that we're doing. So I think having community programs like this is one of the reasons our patrons love our library. So we're really looking forward to getting back to that. As far as summer 2021 goes, all library departments are sort of anticipating a more normal status. A lot of our protocols, I'm guessing, will still be in place. But summer is our busiest time of the year. So I think once Summer Reading Challenges for all ages launch, that's going to be a big drawback to the library. We also will have new learning circle discussions. I am participating in one for librarians through the Rhode Island Library Association. So this is a new sort of group talk program that I'm not familiar with. So I'll be able to give more information about it once I start attending those professional development sessions offered through the Library Association. So one of the other things that we're hoping to bring back is our popular painting classes. I think that these classes were more popular than we thought that they would be. And they were just such a huge hit throughout 2019 and into 2020. So this is one program that we really want to be able to bring back and perhaps use some outdoor space for that, too. Let's take a look here. And that's what I have for Programs. I am hoping we can maybe hold outdoor concerts towards the end of the summer, but it's not something we're planning on right now. We're sort of keeping that in our back pocket. And that's it for Programs. If there's no questions about Programs, I'll move on to Collection. Okay, so as far as our collection goes, with our statistics that we've seen over the past couple of months, E-zone has continued to be a very, very popular source for our patrons. And I don't see that decreasing anytime soon. This is something that I am very happy about. Prior to me arriving here at Tiverton, I actually worked with the E-zone Committee, and E-zone was a large part of my position at both the East Providence Public Library and the Barrington Public Library. So to sort of see this from E-zone from its inception and its birth until, you know, now, when folks can't just, can just not get enough of it, is really, really great. And I'm so happy to see that Tiverton patrons are feeling that way, too, about our E-zone. There are some funding challenges with it. So based on Tiverton's patron usage, we should really be allocating about $10,000 a year from our budget to E-zone. Currently, we allocate about 2,000 of it from our collection or a materials budget to E-zone. So there's a gap there between what we're putting in and what we should be putting in based on how much our patrons use this resource. So typically, I would say this is something that we could work on over the next couple of years. But I think that with our budget being up in the air until at least July, it's not something that I could commit to and spending materials funds on more E-zone until we know a little bit more about our budget. The trade-off with our collection budget right now is that there are less DVDs being put out this year just because of the movie industry and not releasing on DVD. They're doing more streaming. So we do have some audiovisual parts of that budget available to commit to E-zone. The other part of this, too, is that we're just not buying audiobooks anymore like we used to. Many vehicles don't have CD players in them, so that is just something that has changed with the times. So I think we'll end up being able to commit a little bit more towards E-zone. But I would like it to be sort of a larger discussion come when our budget is settled for fiscal year '22 about that. And the foundations buy a book initiative. They are still working on it. So I think altogether, that's really going to help with our collection maintenance, and we're going to be able to update some sections of our, specifically our nonfiction collection, I think, more so than our fiction in large print, that will assist with that. Any questions about the collection? Chris? And then Carol.
Yeah, so the 10,000, it's, is it that, is it that OLS is saying that we should be paying more? Or is just like, it's just not kosher what we're doing? So is it just a matter of moving figures around on lines? Because it looks like what you just said, DVDs and, and the, the audio stuff is going to go down. So part of it will be that. But is that, is that, how come? Because that's, that's one-fifth of what we should be paying.
So this is OSL, Ocean State Libraries, our consortium.
Oh, okay.
So they, right now, they are pulling a big chunk out of their savings every year to put, I believe it was $250,000 into the E-zone budget. So that's just how much people are using this. I am thinking that when we have our next membership meeting, that Rhode Islanders will be using E-zone to the point where Ocean State Libraries will be expending about $1 million on it per year. So it is a very, very well-utilized resource. It's just the sustainability of it is very difficult because of the publishing industry and how much they charge for eBooks and audiobooks. And it's an exorbitant amount over the price of a physical book or a physical audiobook here in the library. So each year, when we allocate a certain amount of money to the materials line, the sort of designations, like how much goes to childrens, how much goes to young adult, and how much goes to adult is up to me. And I sort of see what everybody's going to need for the year, and then they spend each month as they see fit. And by they, I mean the children's librarian, the adult librarian, and the reference librarian for each of their respective collections. So I think that it will be a conversation between me and those librarians about, you know, you're not spending as much on AV, so I think we're going to have to put it more towards E-zone and go from there. So, but yes, it's very, very popular, and I'm so happy that our Tiverton patrons are enjoying it.
Okay, all right, thanks.
And Carol.
So my question was, OSL, they don't charge a participation fee to each library based on their usage? But we get to decide only to pay 2,000?
So there's right around $6,500 built into our quarterly throughout the year. Quarterly E-zone, quarterly OSL fees that are designated specifically for E-zone. So we are technically already paying about $6,500 per year for our E-zone participation, I guess you could say. So it's built.
How, what is that based on?
It is based on, that's a really good question. It, um, it is based on population, and it might even be on cardholders. I'm going to ask, ask for some specifics on that.
That makes sense.
Yeah, so a chunk of, I think it's about $28,000 that we pay right now. So about a quarter of that is for E-zone.
And then, we, we could purchase additional titles that we would own, but we've never done that. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. That's what's called an advantage program. And there are a few libraries that participate where we would purchase certain titles that are in high demand by our patrons. So our patrons would get those first. But, but it's a process to get to be an advantage library. And I'm just not sure that we would make enough purchases to really benefit our patrons right now. So what we do instead is I say to Ocean State Libraries, they say, okay, here's, you know, $2,000. Buy titles that are in high demand by our Tiverton patrons. So it's not necessarily going to put them up to the top of the list, but it's going to help that list move a bit quicker. And therefore, we're able to get more copies.
That's a voluntary payment, that extra 2,000?
Yes, yep.
And how many libraries make a voluntary payment over the fees that are assessed?
That's a really good question. I just got a sustainability survey from Ocean State Libraries the other day. And there were some, I can actually pull up the email right here. It was a good, so there's, I'll start from the top. So there are two or three libraries who give over what they, oh, you know what? I think it's on my Microsoft Teams. So there are two or three, I'll do this from memory. There are two or three libraries who spend over what they should. So for us, like if we spent over that $10,000, we would be in that category. There are about 15 libraries who spend right at the cap. That is, so if it were us, it would be at that 10,000. Then there are about 15 that spend below that cap, and then there are a few who do not input any other funds. So I'll, I'll get those exact numbers for the next meeting. I'm going to write that down right now.
But it's sort of an interesting system that fees are assessed, but the fees are really not sufficient to sustain the program. And beyond that, you're asking for donations.
Yes, pretty much. And so, and so I think at our next membership meeting in May, that is going to be the very serious conversation that we have to have as a consortium, that everybody sort of needs to do their part, and we understand if budget stuff gets in the way. But it's very, very well utilized by our patrons, so, and really by all patrons. Usage has risen over the past year, so I think everybody chipping in is going to be an important part.
But it also sounds like others that some of the high-end are equals. We're just subsidizing other libraries that really can't afford it. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, yep. You could certainly say that, that there's so many different libraries at different levels there, that is part of it. I don't know whose hand was up next, either Jay or Kim.
If you go.
Thanks. So I'm making the broad assumption based on what you're saying and all of the stats that we've seen over the past year, that the pandemic has been the major cause of the increase in the E-Zone usage.
Yes.
But I'm wondering, and you might not even know this question, and I'm not even sure that's something that's been discussed. But do you feel that that's something that's going to continue even after the pandemic kind of ebbs away? You know, do you feel that people have gotten so used to using it and are comfortable with it that those numbers will remain high?
I'm thinking yes, and I say that based on our holds. So a few months ago, we actually, the consortium voted to switch the number of holds from six to four to help things move a little bit more quickly. And that folks should really only be placing holds on items that they really, really want. And part of what's behind that is once a hold is ready for someone, they have two or three days to actually go in and grab it. So even if they don't want it, then it's still sitting and just waiting for them for two or three days. So it's really on the user side of things that we've seen. Even with adjustments to the system, people are still using it. So it, it does remain to be seen that E-Zone could, might not be as popular once things start opening back up. And, I mean, we're open here, but once folks would prefer physical books, things like that. So it is something that remains to be seen. I will say that, that 10,000, it has gone up, obviously, in the past year due to usage, but it was still around 6,000 to 8,000 the previous years. So we were still putting in less than we really should have been, but due to our budgetary concerns, it's what worked best for us.
That was exactly my question. Good job, Kim.
Thanks.
It's, I'm very interested to see what happens. I really am, and I'll definitely keep you all up to date. And I think if we start to see it in our monthly stats, that will be something that'll sort of tip us off to that.
I have a question. As part of our long-range plan, enhancement of our book collection is probably a primary objective. And also, the, on the eBook side, is it something that the, as you mentioned, the foundation has a, I forgot the term you just used about the-
Buy a book.
Right.
Yep.
Is there something they can do to help the library on an ongoing basis to fund these acquisitions?
So, so I actually think, and Kim, correct me if I'm wrong. It sounds like, because Kim attends the foundation meetings. It sounds like the Buy a Book campaign is something that will be ongoing for a while and not just sort of like a few-month camp fundraising campaign. It seems like something that they are willing to have as sort of their always-on-going fundraiser. And Kim?
I know that they were talking at the meetings about the details of how it would work, but they're thinking that this is going to be for people who aren't just going to throw $5 and say, yeah, buy a book. It's going to be somebody who wants to give like $50 or $100 and say, okay, I would like, I would like you to purchase a book about astronomy for the library. So I think that's what they decided is they could, they could choose the genre. Is that right, Catherine?
Yep, the genre, and then our librarian.
Put in it. So it's something like a little more formal than just a normal-
It's like a directed fundraiser?
So it was something that they were looking to be able to extend over a long period of time, especially since people aren't able to go to the library. Like they had that whole big idea that we were all excited about, about the Back to the Future thing, which never came to fruition because of the pandemic. And so they realized they had to do something a little bit different, but something that they could keep at even if people weren't gathering physically.
So each donor almost has like a mini-directed fund where they tell you exactly what they want you to purchase?
Right, like not the title of, not, not-
The John, the-
They could choose like-
Politics or something like that.
Right. And figuring, some people might say, well, I'm not sure whatever your highest need is. And so Catherine said that she would, you know, gather the information on the areas that are lacking right now at the library that we could use some help filling the shelves with.
Where is that publicized, the Buy a Book?
They haven't begun yet.
Oh.
They're still working out the kinks and the details and figuring out exactly how it's going to, to work. So they're actually creating all of that right now.
Do they have separate funds for different initiatives? For instance, does the, does the foundation have a capital fund as opposed to a book fund, or is it just one large pot that's called a fund?
They have different accounts, whether it be at a local bank or with the Rhode Island Foundation. So they don't designate based on use, they more designate based on where it is right now, where it sits. And the, they did have one donor come through at the end of 2020 who specifically wanted to donate for books. I'll actually talk about that in the new business, too. So they had one donor come in, but they're building a website for it, and it looks great. And I hope to share that with you next month. Okay. So let me just get back to my notes here. Okay, so that was collection. And next up is staff training. So one of the goals focused on customer service training for staff. So we have pretty frequent OLS. So our state organization, our state agency, and also OSL, the consortium workshops, and those are still pretty popular options. The OLS workshops from the state agency focus on more, I would say, professional development. And OSL focuses more on the sort of ins and outs of our consortium, things to do with like individual library operations, just to delineate between the two. A little earlier, I mentioned that I was going to be joining what's called a learning circle discussion, and the topic is, let's talk about race. And so it is for any other Rhode Island library staff member. And with myself, there's also two other Tiverton library staff members who are joining different learning circles, but still on the same topic. So I'm excited for that opportunity. And then I do an emergency procedure presentation with staff a couple of times a year. So I have kind of found a way to do that online with them and just have it as asynchronous, so they do it during their shift, and just making sure that they know all of our emergency procedures. As far as customer service training, I had mentioned a couple of options back in December that were free. And one of them was offered actually through OLS, but typically these trainings are going to be something that we have to pay for. So that is a prohibitive cost right now. And I think something to think about for next year once we can get our staff development line back up to its normal level in fiscal year 22. Okay, as far as funding goes, I'm sure you all have heard that the FTR will happen in July now. So we will not have official clarification on our budget until then. I did get some good news about our state grant aid, that the governor's fiscal year 22 budget has level funded the fund that all public libraries pull from for state grant need. So that actually means level funding is never a good thing, but that actually means we'll receive around $4,700 more this year as opposed to last year. So that is good news. And I hope that that budget is put through and ready to go for fiscal year 22, as I'm sure it will be. So I will let you know if I hear anything else about that. We met last week to discuss, to discuss a grant, and I will be honest, I have never seen so many grants available as I have right at this time. So I may actually need you all on a special meeting later this month, because there's actually two grant opportunities that are due on April 1st. I know of one that we will definitely be taking, but I'm not sure about the other. So I may pull you all in for a special meeting to vote on one or both of those. But this is, it's really good news that we're able to sort of target a need in this library and then have an alternate funding source like a grant. So we're working on that. And I will bring those to you as the due dates approach. Any questions about the long-range plan update?
You mentioned some costs for some training was prohibitive. What is your version of prohibitive?
I would say between $100 to $200, I think that's something that is reasonable, but something that I am very cautious towards the end of the fiscal year, especially with how much building maintenance we've had. So if we get towards like May, and I have a little bit left over in staff development, I will see if we can purchase those trainings for our staff.
Okay. We have very different versions of prohibitive.
I think so, yes. And oftentimes, too, if I wait a little bit longer, sometimes they will pop up for free somewhere, like the OLS training had come up, and they had actually paid for that training for all Rhode Island library staff. Yes, okay. Waiting, waiting was a good thing. Okay. So that's it?
All right, are you ready to move on to the art donation new business item?
Sounds good to me. Okay, so I sent you all an application for an art donation. There was also a picture with it as well. I also sent some things for consideration, and I think this opportunity sort of gives us a window to take a look at if we're interested in creating maybe sort of a more targeted art donation approach to our library here. As I mentioned, grants are wonderful, and I think prior to when I had been here, or when I first came on board, there was some discussion, I can't remember with who, about a potential art installation system. So it's like a track that runs along the ceiling, and then it has cords coming down with hooks on the cords, and art can be hung from those fixtures. So there was some discussion about that, about whether we would want to install those throughout the library and then have an artist's display on a monthly basis. So I think that there is definitely the possibility for a bigger conversation about art here in the library. But I did provide you with some info about the piece of art for tonight.
So my understanding is we, we have an art donation policy, and so it's, it's not really something the board votes on, that people are free to donate art to the library with the understanding that there's no guarantee the library will display it, or how long the library will display it, and the library at some point may decide to sell it. So those are the terms of our, our donation policy, correct?
I believe that the board does vote on it. As far as I know, the form that is sent to the donor, once it has been accepted, does have a board signature that's required for it.
Because I, since I've joined, we have not voted up or down on any art donations, and I'm not, I'm not sure that I would be in favor of that. I, I, I don't know, what, what is your feeling? You know, I don't know what fits the library. I don't know what the staff wants. I, I think the policy is good in that it says we will accept donations, but again, there's no guarantee that it will be displayed, or how long it will be displayed, or that the library won't choose to, you know, sell it. Otherwise, I feel like I'm being asked to vote on sort of the artistic quality of any donated piece of artwork, or that we're giving some sort of indication that we will display it in the library.
Could I ask a question? Do we have any artwork currently that's not on display, that's in storage? And I, and I've got a follow-up question to that. That's, that's why I'm asking. My follow-up, not follow-up, but comment would be, if we were to accept art, I read the policy. It's pretty straightforward about the fact that we own it, we can do whatever we want with it. But I was wondering if maybe we would want to encourage people to donate, but display these on like a kind of a rotating basis like museums do, where they periodically go through and refresh what's on display? Just a suggestion.
Yep, that's definitely a possibility. There is one piece that was donated. I believe it was like the second day I was here. And so there was a lot of history about the donation prior to my arrival. So it is hanging in the community room, and it has been there for about two and a half years now. So if we did want to rotate art in that area, that's definitely a possibility. I think that is a great idea, because it gives an opportunity for a lot of different artists to display. My only thing is that we just need to secure it properly. And I think for the children's room, that's when we want to discuss sort of like an official system for how to display art, since we do have little ones in there.
It, it seems to me there's also a difference, though, between an art display that showcases local artists and that these pieces are actually for sale versus a piece that say, I, I seem to recall a photo from the 1800s or something that was donated to us. You know, something that people think may have local history value that they've donated, that I'm not sure would lend itself as well to rotating displays.
Yes, that is a good point, too, that if, if it's something historical, sometimes it just needs to be in our local history room more. Could be something that might be a little bit beyond our capabilities of maintaining, too. I did just find, so I'm just going to share my screen once I, my Word document opens up here. The art donation form that is completed once the board has voted has that section. So I'm going to give this to you right now. Are you able to see my screen here? So it's this first section right about the top. So it says, at its regular monthly meeting on and date, the Tiverton Library Board of Trustees voted to accept your donation of art to Tiverton Public Library.
And maybe that's part of the policy, because the art may be a two-ton stack that we have no way of moving, should we, you know, or storing if we decided not to display it anymore?
Exactly.
Well, I just want to, I think, I also wonder sometimes, some people, I felt a little bit funny about it, because I, I'm not, I'm not an artist, but I know we've got a huge artist community around here, and sometimes it can be very difficult accepting one or choosing one, because it gets to be political. And, you know, I mean, there has been battles in the past few years, and some associations have broken off from the, another association because their feelings were hurt. So I wonder about that, but I also wonder about, some people say, oh, this- So I wonder about that, but I also wonder about some people say, oh, this is not an appropriate painting or picture or whatever, for whatever reason. And, you know, that's when you start getting into all this kind of judging stuff, which I, I don't even want to go there. So I don't know how you get around it either. Cause like some people think it's wonderful, some think it's, you know, it's, it's I don't know, immoral, you know, it's, we get into that kind of stuff and it's like, that's, that gets, that becomes a sticky wicket. But I don't know how to, how do you, how do you stop that? And if someone gets upset because you don't accept their, the artwork. It's, I mean, they've got to have done it somehow, somehow because it has happened in other places. There are art, there are art things. I, I think the thing about the putting artists on display and possibly selling it, I think that would also be a problem. Because the art galleries need as much as they can get. And it's like, if they put pictures up there and it's, you know, talk to the artist, it's like, I think that's another difficulty. So I, I mean, those are, those are the cautions I think that you put listed down there and I, I agree with you. I, I felt uneasy about it. And I, you know, I don't, I don't want to turn it into a big deal, but I don't want to make a little thing into a big deal either. Because we didn't think of different policies. So how many of these art, art things have been donated at all?
Just one prior to my arrival, but I was the one who ended up receiving it. And I think that we have a good system with our display case in the lobby right now. So we'll have artists come in and rotate on a monthly basis, which is great, but it's also a small space. So it, it really doesn't lend itself to being as big as a gallery or encroaching on any galleries in the area. So I think that has worked out fairly well.
Yeah. And I think maybe that's it. It's, it becomes a, maybe it's a size thing, you know, as well. So I don't know. I, I don't feel strongly about it.
Yeah, I think the fact that we're so straightforward about it in the actual proposal and saying, if you give it to us, here's what could happen with it. And you have to be okay with that if you're giving it to us.
So did that picture already get accepted?
No. Staff are under strict construction not to take anything related to art until we go through the formal process. So. I believe that's actually how the piece ended up being accepted before. So.
Somebody walked in with it and just left it at the information desk.
Yeah. I, I, like I said, I don't have strong feelings on, I'd be curious what the rest of you think.
I think, you know, we have the policy. And I guess my feeling would be until it becomes a problem. I, I think we keep going with it. We, we don't seem to get that many. We are covered under the wording of the policy. Should we feel something was not appropriate for display in the library? That we are not obligated to display it or not just the board, if the staff or whoever feels that it's, we don't have the place or the correct setting for it. We have, you know, we're not obligated. So I guess we need to just go, that's what I would recommend. Go with our policy. And as long as it seems to work, and if we reach a point where it doesn't, then we can always revise the policy.
And this piece in particular is a small piece. It's only 11 by 14.
And I actually, I think it would be great if we could rotate it in the community room with that piece currently in there right now.
All right.
So. In the children's room and I, I also thought, let the kids have their art, their own art. That's what, that's what I was just thinking. And I remember when I was in teaching and they said, don't put the, don't put the professionals in the room. Have the kids put their own art in the room. And I always liked that idea. So anyhow, community room sounds fine with me.
Would someone like to make a motion to accept the art donation?
I'll make a motion to accept the art donation.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Chris and seconded by Sanford. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. That was unanimous.
Thank you.
All right. So our final item is actually picking up the discussion that we started earlier. The E-zone expenses that were covered by a donation that came through the foundation. I did have some follow up questions. So we are fortunate that we have a number of groups that support the library. People who want to support programming in the library. We direct towards becoming active with the Friends group because that is their mission. My understanding that the mission of the foundation was more directed toward building up an endowment. Because if we get back to the point where we have an endowment and we can draw, say, $10,000 in interest every year, then that money is eligible for the state grant matching. So our state need is based on how much we spend and that would include money we drew from an endowment. So I, I was kind of surprised to hear that we were getting funds for collection development from the foundation. Because sometimes that comes directly to the library. For instance, the memorial funds collected for John Fitzgerald. People were just directed to make a donation to Tiverton Library Services. So I wondered, is there an advantage for somebody who wants to make a collect, a collection donation? So funds to improve our collection. Is there a financial advantage to go through the foundation? Or not?
For the individual, yes, because the foundation is a 501(c)(3), so that does provide them with a tax write-off option.
Oh, and when, because I was told when I made the donation to Tiverton Library Services that that would be tax deductible. Was that incorrect?
I, so we write a thank you note to somebody and it is up to them to decide how it goes with their taxes. I am not good with taxes. I'm not a tax attorney.
You're not good. But I, I think we, we need to make that clear. That if people, you know, want to make a donation to the children's collection or something, what's the best group or the best way to, to make that? Because I, I don't think that's clear now. And maybe it's part of our, you know, promotional material. How to, how to support your library? And spell out different ways and sort of the different advantages. You know, if you've got money to give, well, if you direct it toward an endowment, then that will sustain the library for, you know, decades to come and will qualify the library for higher grants from the state. If you, like I said, we know if you want to support programming, the friends are the group that you should get in contact with. But the collection stuff and maybe some of the other ideas that the foundation now is working on. I, I think it would be helpful to have that available to, you know, people in the library, hopefully who would be interested in supporting the library in different ways.
Can I ask a follow, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead Catherine, sorry, go ahead.
No, that's okay. I was just saying, I think so too. And I, I think it's good for the foundation because they as a board are able to build relationships and build those long lasting connections to donors. And it is something that I can do, but just on a limited basis because I am one person. And you all are the same as well. You all are very busy. So I think with the foundation being a primarily a fundraising entity, that is something that has really helped in building those relationships. Sandy, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry. Just a follow up question, clarification. You indicated that by having the funds go to the foundation and then the library withdrawing those in the form of an endowment to the library, the state will match that?
Well, it's not a one for one match, but our state grant and aid is based on how much money the town spends on the library. And that includes not only, you know, municipal raise through taxes, but how much money comes from an endowment. So if we say pulled $10,000 from an endowment in any one year, if it's 22%, then that would be another $2,200 from the state.
That's because.
Endowment. So, so that's why it, it makes, you know, a lot of sense to build up an endowment again.
That's, I guess that's because the library is part of a branch of the municipal government town of Tiverton. That's the reason? Cause if it was a private library, it would be different, correct?
It's actually the same. A good example is the Westerly Library where they receive a significant amount of endowment grand need, but they are, I believe they're, Westerly Library is a 501(c)(3), so they actually, yep, they receive state grant aid and also endowment grant aid as a 501(c)(3).
Oh, okay. Okay, good. Well, that's, 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 that's probably the better route then, having it go through the foundation as opposed to directly contributing it to the library.
But it, like book donations, donations to buy more ebooks, that would not count toward increasing our state grant.
Okay.
It would have to be money from an endowment specifically, as I understand it. Is that correct, Catherine?
That's correct. So it has to be from a specific endowment account. They're very, very, very clear about that. They even say like somebody like Rhode Island Foundation is a perfect example of that. Which is where some of our foundation's funds are, actually the majority.
I wanted to just piggyback on what Catherine had said about, you know, making, building those relationships. And that's what the foundation has been talking a lot about this year because they haven't been able to actually sink their teeth into a program that could, you know, basically raise our endowment. What they decided to do was what, how can we still help the library and build relationships with donors who may be looking to make more sizable donations to the library? So that's why I said earlier, like we're not, they're not looking for the small donations like the $5, the $10, the $15, but the friends do. And so the friends are, you know, gathering those smaller donations that are really helpful when they come together. And the foundation is working on leveraging relationships with, with people and businesses in the area who might be interested doing something larger scale in the future. And so they thought to themselves, okay, maybe doing something like a book with, you know, a plate in it. Would be something that people might like to do, like in memory of a loved one or, you know, for a grandchild that they enjoy spending time with at the library. But maybe their friends are, are a little bit more meaty than, than is typical. So I think that was the reasoning behind doing that this year, since there wasn't the ability to do a big push within the pandemic.
I have a follow up question, not to prolong the meeting, but just, would it be helped? Well, I'm not as familiar with what the lot, the foundation does. Would it be helpful to have the foundation do a presentation to the Board of Trustees at some point to explain the ins and outs of the endowments and what, what they're doing? I mean, again, not them being nosy, I'm just, because again, the foundation is set up to help the library with capital and operating funds. So I'm wondering if it might be helpful for them to either give us a presentation or be available to answer questions, maybe at one of the meetings. Don't know.
We have a meeting Thursday night with them and I can definitely ask. I think it would be good to, if potentially Stu Gilfillan, who's their chair, came on into one of our meetings and talked a little bit about the Buy a Book program, once it has like officially launched and had the website ready and everything. So I can certainly ask about that.
That would be great.
Okay.
Catherine, do you know if the foundation writes up an annual report?
You know, I don't think they do.
Because I have to agree with Sandy. I, I have no knowledge of how much, how many funds they have and how many accounts and whether they, how many are anticipated to sort of stay put in our targeted for an endowment and, and maybe some other accounts are targeted for something else. So I, I would find that very helpful. And it's hard to me, that's probably the kind of thing that would be written up in an annual report.
That's an excellent suggestion.
Yeah. They, they might've had one at a time when the library was being built to try and drum up that interest and that being sort of like their pitch manual. I don't know, but I think that would still be applicable now. So I can certainly ask about that too.
So when, whenever they're available, I, I mean, I would appreciate that to sort of the introduction to the library foundation in, in their current accounts and fundraising efforts. And it's a way to share it with the public as well when they share at our meetings. Because they're, you know, at least for now, they're being zoomed.
Exactly. I will definitely mention this to them on Thursday. I have a director's report section in their monthly meetings. So this will go right in there.
Anything else on that item?
Was there enough clarification about E-zone and how that works?
All right. Well, if there are no more questions, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Thank you, Kim. Second, anyone?
I'll second it.
Second by Sanford. All in favor? Aye. Any, anyone opposed? During none, we're free to go.
Thank you all very, very much. And I will be in contact if I have any new.